One item on the agenda tonight, and that is a public safety update. And for that, I will turn it over to Chief Schultz.
Thank you, Council President, Council members, and everyone joining us via Zoom. Good afternoon, thank you for having us here today. I'm John Schultz, Police Chief. With me is Deputy Chief Harden and I have Investigations Commander Chandler Swain. Our goal today is to update you on significant occurrences and events relative to public safety in the city. And give a brief status update on, I'm sorry, on the department. This slide really emphasizes what initiated the need for this meeting today. Represents firearm-related activity in the city and the unacceptable increase in firearm violence that is affecting our region. As you can see, there was a huge increase in 2020 over 2019, followed by an increase in '21, and 2022 is already set to outpace '21. So, you know, we can only guess why we had the increase. I think a reasonable guess would say because between 2019, 2020, we had the COVID pandemic. Kind of correlates with that steady increase. And this is something that our crime analyst puts together for us or updates on a regular basis. These numbers, she's out right now, so we kind of had to update these numbers the best we could without her. So, once she's back and we get it updated, it will probably increase these numbers a little bit more. And we'll put that out to use information. So, this is another statistic that's kept by our crime analyst. And it also hasn't been updated since our last homicide. And if I actually go back to the previous slide, I, what really stands out from this is the number of homicides just thus far this year is up to six. Over four from firearms-related homicides last year, four the year before, two and four. So, getting to this one, the big takeaway is this is the victims that have been involved in all the shooting incidents, not just firearms, but have also been victims wounded from firearms-related cases. That's one of the big takeaways is the, is to the African-American community, how it's affecting it. This year, twice as likely to be the victim of violent crime if you're African-American in the city. It also shows that about 20% of the victims that have been involved in crimes involving shooting violence are community members. It means 80% have come from outside the community. Want to give a quick update on where we are with our six homicide investigations. Before I start, I want to give an immense amount of credit to our officers' response on the now-all-too-common shots-fired call that they get on the radio. Really, I think enforces one of our core values of valor or courage, that they, without hesitation, respond to these calls. And the tremendous work of our investigative unit to get these to a filing standard. They work these, obviously, as our priority, while on average, they have about 28 other cases in their queue that are involving people crimes. So, they're doing a tremendous amount of work. So, the first one I wanted to update was our first homicide of the year occurred on January 12th. And this was at the Circle K. Patrol officers responded to a shooting where a subject was down in front. When they got there and reviewing video, they found that the gentleman or the victim was coming out of it and was kind of ambushed from behind and shot. In looking at the video, they were able to make the correlation that it was the same suspect that had been involved in a homicide at the end of 2021, who was a 14-year-old male. We had, we had had probable cause to arrest him for that previous one, and we had employed the help of the federal marshals in locating him. Just hadn't located him yet. The following day, this happened on the 12th. By the following day, on the 13th, thanks to a lot of good work from Investigations and follow-up, they were able to get him into custody. So, he's currently sitting in jail with the two homicide charges. Our next one occurred on July 9th, and this was the Cheers homicide. So, this is a gentleman was assaulted outside and then shot in the back. There were two suspects involved, both are currently in custody and are being held on $3 million bail. Then, our next homicide was Musicians Hall. And if you recall this, I think it was the day before Rent River Day is what's going to happen, the parade. That's what kind of sticks out in my mind with this one. But from the accounts I've heard from the officers and the video I've seen, it was an utter war zone for the officers going into it with multiple victims down and them going there to give aid to those people in need. And the, you know, people that were trying to stop them or fight with them as they were going in there to render aid is just, again, significant, and it really shows the amount of courage it takes by the officers and the valor going into these cases. With this, and it's common in a lot of these, is the amount of cooperation we get from witnesses is little to none, unfortunately. Which makes it, you know, that much more difficult for the detectives to do their job and bring people to justice. In this case, there's, we have very little to go on. You know, not a whole lot of video evidence or evidence coming from any of the witnesses. What we were able to find out, at the shooting scene, they recovered four guns. None of the guns recovered were tied to citizens or rent cases. But the lab said that based on rounds found there, that at least 11 guns were used in the shooting. Lab results came back indicating there were three unique nine-millimeter casings or casings that were fired from three different guns that are associated with cases all over South King County and Tacoma, which involved unsolved homicides, burglaries, robberies, and shootings. So, to this date, or to date with that case, no suspects are identified. So, we're still working it to try to, try to find witnesses or someone that will collaborate with what happened there. Our next shooting was, happened down at 919 Howzer Way South when a young man was putting, he has a boat rental and often rents his boat out over at Coulon. And he was putting it away for the evening, and a gentleman came up behind him or suspect came up behind him and just shot and killed him. We believe that this case is probably tied as a retaliation to the Cheers shooting. And right now, we have some, a little bit to go on, so they're still following up on leads. And hopefully, we'll soon have a suspect for that one. And then we had 321 Wells Avenue South. This was a residence that was well-known to us. We had, we had met with the community members, Jeff and I, and one of our patrol commanders about a week prior to this incident happening. Just to hear some of their concerns over what was going on. The deceased at that location was not a regular to the house, but we believe he was there looking for his girlfriend and gotten an altercation with one of the residents there. At this point, a suspect has been identified, and the Department of Corrections is assisting and actively looking to track him down. And then our last one happened on September 1st at the Crestview Apartments up off Southwest Sunset. And this one, too, to the suspect and victim were involved in a physical fight out in the parking lot in the early morning hours when another party, I believe, pulled out a gun and shot the victim. What's concerning about this one, there was multiple shots fired, upwards of 30 shots fired. And, you know, no one in the community even called 911 to say that they heard the shots fired. It was when some staff for the apartment complex showed up for work in the morning when they saw the gentleman laying there. So, this one is, they have identified a potential suspect, and they're just working on developing probable cause to bring that person to justice. So, the downtown core, this is another area that's becoming synonymous with public safety. And I'll bring some background into, into some of our efforts down there. So, our special operations group and patrol started addressing the quality of life issues in the area around 100 South Third Place, kind of the Safeway 711 area back in January. Their emphasis was in direct response to, you know, some of what you all were hearing, along with what we were hearing from the public. Property crime, a lot of nuisance stuff, narcotics usage, trespassing, loitering, you know, the urinating, defecating in public. So, initially, we collaborated with our public safety partners, offering social services, addressing medical needs as necessary, really understanding that some of the needs of our community members goes beyond the limits of enforcement. The holistic approach was offered and assistance to those in need. And according to Sergeant Morgan, who was heading up our efforts there, they made, in this initial phase, they made about 350 contacts with individuals there, and about 10 accepted the offer of referral to services. And we have no way of knowing if they followed up with those referrals, a pretty low percentage. So, the next phase included enforcement of crimes, mainly trespasses, thefts, lewd behavior, and warrants. But as drug behaviors blatantly increased, so is our response. We performed several operations using our undercover team to target narcotics dealers now in that area. One arrest made involved watching a subject make hand-to-hand narcotics transactions in the area of 300 Rainier Avenue South. When he was contacted, he fled on foot, was eventually apprehended. His associated vehicle was searched, following an indication given by our drug dog Zoe that there were narcotics in the vehicle. Inside the vehicle, they did locate narcotics and a firearm. A check of that gun showed that it had been used in three shootings throughout the area. Charges were subsequently forwarded to the prosecutor for a violation of the Uniforms Firearms Act on the subject. This incident occurred in June, and the reason I highlight it, it was the same subject that was one of our arrestees in the Cheers homicide. So, very close to home and in custody prior to that. So, following, also, working down there, following seeing an increase in actually Target shopping carts show up in the area of 300 Rainier Avenue South. And kind of keeping an eye on it and watching with merchandise, you know, they were being traded for drugs. So, upon seeing that, our special operations team that had been targeting that area went over to Target, and with their cooperation, started doing an emphasis on shoplifters and retail organized theft. We've been out there once, and it was fairly successful arresting several for shoplifting, just the blinacy of just loading up a cart and just walking out with the contents. So, with the success of that one operation, we intend on doing more and probably extending it out to several other of the businesses in the area, including like the Fred Meyer that's across the street that's seeing a lot of the same type of activity. Also, as a possible deterrent and force multiplier for us, we placed a camera trailer in the area of 300 Rainier Avenue South. Be very overt about this, that we're here, we're watching. This was done, obviously, to deter the criminal activity, identify subjects, and assist with any prosecutions. The trailer was purchased using Narcotics Seizure Funds to help combat drug trafficking in the area. So, going forward, and you'll probably be hearing more about this in the upcoming budget presentation, we're looking to add full-time patrol to that area by making the downtown core a special district and allocating officers and resources to be solely responsible for the downtown core. So, really what this boils down to is the issues in this area revolve around addiction and the rapid use of narcotics. So, that is what I really tried to illustrate with the slide we put together with the Target shopping cart showing down there. But, but a number of those individuals are, you know, in some way using narcotics. So, without some change to the current policy or legislation, referring to the Blake decision, really, this is going to be a difficult problem for us to solve down there. All right, staffing, all right, is where we talk about the health of our department. We're budgeted for 129 commissioned officers and 35 non-commissioned personnel and support staff. So, our current numbers, we're at 119 commissioned and 29 support staff. So, across the board, and this is no secret, this has been the most difficult time to recruit and hire qualified applicants to this profession. Operationally, or available for solo patrol officers, a more realistic number is 109. Currently, we have four in the academy, we have two in field training, we have one on military deployment, two on FMLA, and one is out due to job injury. The upside of this is we've extended six conditional offers of employment to new recruits and are waiting for academy dates for those. The, the first one on that list, we sent their information over to the academy, and the academy, academy date we got was in March. So, at that time, it was about six months out to just to get this recruit into the academy. So, we started working with the academy on ways we can help reduce that gap. And one of those is we're looking at sending a training officer out there to assist with training, to kind of maybe move us up to the head of the line when it comes to getting recruits there. And we are continuing our recruitment efforts, and in November, we'll be hosting a diversity and law enforcement career workshop, engaging members of our minority communities to address real and perceived barriers for those seeking a career in the police force. And calls for service. So, this year, we're on track to meet with last year's calls for service, about 74,000. So, to give this a little perspective, if everything was equal and we were fully staffed, this would equate to each commissioned officer responding to about 570 calls for service a year. Not undoable, but a little bit of a burden. So, we've had a reduction in calls for service over time, if you look at the 2018 till now. But at the same time, like we showed in the violent crime graphic, we've had a substantial increase in the severity of the calls that officers are responding to. So, as the calls for service have gone down, the types of calls and the severity of those are going up. So, organizational priorities, I want to leave you with this. And it's our commitment and our, kind of our mission and values, that we're a people-first organization and values-based. Our organization exists to serve the public, that should always be done with compassion and professionalism. Another tool that we've employed in our goal to provide outstanding service is a partnership with Axon, the same company that we've, that are doing our body cameras and tasers. So, in this partnership, it's a trial survey tool that will reach out to reporting parties to measure the quality and level of service that we're providing. We just started the program within the last couple of weeks and haven't got data back yet. When we do, we'll share that. And one of the exciting things, part of the same program, it lets us do internal surveys to be able to measure the health and needs of our staff. With that, is the end of what I have.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Those, the statistics you shared are sobering and very much in line with what we've been hearing and seeing and witnessing in the community. So, I know there'll be a robust conversation. I don't expect us to have all the solutions tonight. I'm encouraged that you're coming with us, to us with a, at least for the downtown portion, a budget recommendation on creating that special, the district there. So, I will, at this point, open it up to conversation, and I see Councilmember Alberston has, activated his microphone, so go ahead, Councilmember Alberston.
Oh, you can tell that, well, isn't this fancy? Thank you, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. We know that as far as the drug use, kind of how there's limitations there. Can you speak to the, we know there is drug, there is drug dealing going on in that same area. Can you speak to kind of what's being done as far as, you know, tracking license plates, trying to, you know, hit it from that source to, to, you know, put some sort of, have some sort of impact on, you know, just that accessibility right there as far as those deals being done?
Yes, sir. So, two things with that, one of them was...
Oh, the camera, I know you mentioned the camera.
Yeah, so we've been putting the camera down there, very overt, we want people to know, we're here, we're watching. You know, it's a high-crime area that, and from that, we can at least get information on plates. And if they are still dealing, even in the presence of that, then we can follow up on that. We also are doing at least once a week, if not more often, operations down there with our undercover unit, watching drug transactions, and then as the people leave the area, taking them off.
Okay.
And that's why, one of the, one of the incidents that I highlighted was one of those transactions that they arrested the subject, who was later one of the suspects in the, in the Cheers homicide. That's just, I highlights one of many that they've arrested down there for, for dealing narcotics.
So, there have been many arrests?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. President?
I was not sure who was first. I saw Councilmember Halloran, but...
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I appreciate it. So, two questions. One, the shoplifting emphasis that you're dealing?
Yes, sir.
You said Fred Meyer. Are you, at some point, also going to include Safeway? Or is it Fred Meyer because of the variety of goods that you can, non-grocery goods you can get at Fred Meyer?
I, so I know they're gonna hit, I don't know all their operational, what they're going to be doing. I know they, they mentioned Fred Meyer because they see a lot of goods coming across the street from Fred Meyer over to that area also. But yeah, Safeway, I think, would be just as viable of a target for them to take on. And I know they're, they're probably feeling a lot of, a lot of the impact in that.
And then my second question briefly is, you'd mentioned working with the company that you're doing the body cams with. How are the body cameras working out?
Absolutely awesome. It's, it's one of those tools I think we wish we had for a long time. Just the amount of information that we get off of it, you know, following a contact or, or, you know, even the change in behavior that people have knowing that, that it's being recorded.
One thing I'd like to add briefly is, in response to Councilperson Alberston's question about cameras, is also Axon, we temporarily contracted Axon for an ALPR system, which is an automated license plate reader. So, when we come into areas where there is a crime, whether it's a homicide or narcotics activity, the vehicles that are responding to that location, the patrol cars that are equipped with onboard cameras, will be able to capture the license plate, so the vehicle's coming and going. So, when we go to investigate that homicide or the narcotics activity afterwards, we'll be able to identify possible suspects.
Councilmember Halloran?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. I actually have two questions. The first is with regard to the decline in the number of calls versus the violence of the incoming calls. The first thing that hit me is, is the decline because people aren't bothering to call in the lesser infractions? And that the number of violent crimes has actually remained the same? Or, or what would you attribute the decrease in the number of calls to?
So, the second part of that, I know the, the number of violent crimes hasn't decreased. I think we've shown, especially on that second slide, that they have increased significantly since 2019. Originally, we, we kind of chalked up the decline in calls kind of corresponded again with COVID. And our thought then was that, okay, more people were staying home, so there's probably less property crimes occurring. And so, there were less calls for service. That, that was just a guess on our part of why we had that incline, because it kind of, again, corresponded the same with kind of the COVID shutdown and more people staying home. So, there's probably, you know, less, less thefts of vehicle, less, you know, burglaries to residents, some of the malnishes that occurred.
Okay. And my second question is, and this is just kind of off the cuff, but overt camera vans, I think that's fantastic. For some of these hotspots, can't we just put in cameras, even fake ones?
We probably can, and, and we do have that capability.
I mean, if it's a deterrent.
Right. And we're, and we are looking at, we don't currently have them. We have some that we use in some undercover capacities that aren't as overt. But I agree, there are companies that, out there that sell them that are very overt, you put them in high-crime areas. You know, the, the one area that, that, that we've looked at, and I think we've talked to public safety, is, you know, the, we want to keep it commercial areas or, or, you know, places where people expect to be out in public and be viewed and try to stay away from the residential neighborhoods with those.
Sure, sure. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.?
Sorry, Councilmember Alberston, I was gonna call on Councilmember Vaughn.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I'm going by these little red rings on your mics if that's, if that works for folks.
That's fine, yes, she hasn't spoken.
Thank you, Council President, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation, giving us the update. Really appreciate all of your work and your team's work. I do have a question in terms of tracking, because you mentioned earlier that while we looked at a holistic approach early on in trying to provide a resource to those who are on-house and, and what came about with, in terms of tracking? I know at the state level, there is not really a tracking system. Are we envisioning a tracking system within our jurisdiction? Or can you explain a little bit more so we can understand?
And you're talking about some of the, when it comes to enforcing the drug law and us having to give referrals.
Yes.
And so, us tracking those referrals that go along with that. Yeah, we, we can do it internally, and we have been, so tracking those internal referrals. And when someone, you know, you get two referrals on the third one, we can, we can refer charges to the prosecutor for a misdemeanor crime. So, yeah, we can do that internally, but that just covers people that are in our jurisdiction. If they've, if they've come into our jurisdiction, have already had referrals prior, we don't have, we don't have the ability or the state hasn't put in place the ability to track those.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Alberston?
Thank you, Mr. President. This may be hard to speak to, but you know, given the, the limited resources, you know, in, in the department and that sort of thing, one of the things that occurs, that occurs to me is the, the more incidents that we have that need to be responded to, responded to in the, in that Rainier Third Corridor and, and associated with a lot of the drug-related crime use or, or drug use or whatever you can do with that. Has it been noticed at all that the resources to respond to other, other type of calls? I mean, there's, you can only stretch the resources, so the physical resources so far, you know. Does it seem like it's taken an inordinate amount of, of time in this area versus, you know, just the non, the non-related areas? And I don't know if you've noticed that or what, but that seemed, that seems like that would be a concern if we don't really get a handle on this.
And I agree, so what we, we have done, we've allocated our special operations group, and this is their project area. The problem with that is, is that group has the ability to kind of shift speeds. And, and if we have, let's say, a homicide suspect where our detectives have identified who they are and where they're at, it's this group with their special training that we'd, we'd take and put towards that effort. So, yeah, and that's why we came up with the idea of, okay, let's just make this a special, you know, district, patrol district. So, we have officers that are solely responsible for it versus, and, and, yeah, like you said, sometimes we have to pull the resources we have that we're dedicating to this to go deal with other things throughout the city when, when something of that magnitude or importance pops up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Halloran?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have received an observation from a constituent, which I don't know if it's valid or not, but I thought I'd pass it on. Please take it for what it's worth. And that is that when people, when shop owners or business owners are calling in to trespass somebody off of their property, their observance is that the officer, the patrol officer is sort of just saying, come on, let's move along, and not actually doing a trespass. And I, I don't know if there's any validity to that or not, but I have heard that actually a couple of times. So, I wonder if you would be able to speak to that?
Yeah, that, you know, that, that's obviously not what we want from the patrol officers. I mean, they should be providing the service, especially to the shop owners that are, that are, you know, feeling a brunt of what's going on down there. So, no, that's not, that's not how they should be directing that. And most likely, they, they should be given a trespass warning and then following that up with the next time that person shows up, it should be a physical arrest. So, and anytime you get any of those, please forward them to Jeff or I. And we'd love to follow up and follow up with the shop owner and make sure that, that we make things right with them.
Mr. President?
I will do that, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Prince?
Any, again, any update on what's going on with Cheers based on the incident back in July? I know they closed down for a spell.
They did, they, they, they closed down for a spell, they then followed up with a meeting with us and the city attorney to come up with some recommendations to make their location safer. Following that, I think we lifted the, the business license, or we gave back the business license, I think we had, we had pulled it from them. They got their business license back and have been operating ever since. I think they, they added security and a few other recommendations, and they changed their business hours, and they were closing earlier. And since that incident, since that occurred, we've had very few calls for service there. They're, they're back open and operating.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Halloran, for that comment, because I have heard it quite a bit. And of course, myself, I shop at the Safeway downtown quite often and Fred Meyer as well. So, I personally witnessed quite a bit as far as folks coming in and taking items and the store owner. Um, and uh, the store owners and, and, and uh, workers can't, won't do anything about it because it's kind of, uh, their hands are tied. But my, my question to you then, Chief, is what kind of support do you need from council? Uh, and you mentioned some proposed potential budget proposal that you'd be presenting later. But what other uh, support that we can provide you and your team?
Right. So, so what you referred to earlier was, was a staffing ask that we were gonna do. I would say also is to support legislative changes, especially geared around changing, you know, Blake to, to something where there's, you know, maybe not enforcement, but, but at least the ability to get help for these people. And maybe, you know, what that looks like. I know um, the city's putting together some legislative recommendations around that. So I would say supportive of that would probably be the most helpful.
All right, uh, I will ask a question, uh, since I don't see any more hands raised at the moment. Um, and on, continuing on the subject of policy that we can enact. Um, and I'm, I'm more interested perhaps, what can we do locally? I mean, I know a lot of the stuff we might have to go to the state for, but are there any policy recommendations? I'm particularly concerned um, around the level of violent crime. That's the slide I keep going back to, uh, and particularly the number of youth that seem to be involved. There are people, at least on the younger, if they're not minors, um, on the younger end of that spectrum. Anecdotally, it seems to me that perhaps, you know, and I'd be curious if there's doubts that we have to back this out, that the number of firearms perhaps increased when the pandemic started, if people armed up. And I'm not to say that I would explain for all of this, but it feels like perhaps there are more out there. Is there anything we can do on the gun violence side, policy-wise, in your view? Um, I, I, I know there are some ideas out there that we can enact locally, things that we can do uh, here just within the city.
I'd have to do some research into that. Sorry, I don't know um, what the answer to that would be ordinance-wise, what we could put in place to help that.
So one ordinance I'm aware of, um, that I know the city Seattle acted, do we have a law required? So for, so some of these, I assume, are stolen, um, that are recovered in the end, stolen firearms. Do we have any sort of ordinance requiring the reporting of stolen firearms in effect that you're aware of?
Right. And I think that was enacted into state law with.
Okay.
Yeah. And you had to secure your guns, especially if you're, it's in the home and there's certain regulations around that. So yes, there's, it's already state law that covers that.
And then I, I, I would be curious, do you have to know some more as far as if there were other? And certainly I'd invite other colleagues on council to contribute either now or later um, for, for things we can do specifically around firearms. Uh, because I, I do certainly have a concern that that has contributed to some of what we've seen. Obviously, there, there is a variety of factors, but I, I'm trying to think, what can we actually do here that might have an impact? Councilmember Rivera?
Well, to speak to what you just spoke to, I think what you're referring to, um, she shelfed Washington State Law Initiative 1639, which, which I think it incentivizes the reporting of, of lost and stolen firearms. But I don't know if it actually requires it by law. I think that's something we can definitely look into. I know in 2015, the Seattle, CDCL became the first city in the state to pass an ordinance specifically requiring the reporting of lost and stolen firearms. That had to be made within 24 hours. And so I think looking and doing some research into that might be of good benefit for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Um, additional comments, questions? Councilmember Halloran.
Thank you.
It's right there.
So I'm, um, just in terms of the timing of what Councilmember Rivera said, because the state law has changed since 2015, I wonder, aren't we bound to not exceed state? So what, what's the, we're not allowed to take a step further than the state is willing to go, correct? Any senior members on legislation?
I, I don't, I, I don't. I do not believe there's a necessary supremacy clause on some, there are some items, but not on all.
Okay, that would be good for us to know. Thank you.
And I might, I might also look, I know we have, uh, and I'm not calling on you, Doug, but I see you, you're on Zoom as well. If you had any input on this as well, um, as far as what, what we could do with respect to state law. Um, I, I know as far as like, if it's an explicit, like, limit, like, on authority, that we couldn't obviously exceed that. Um, versus a, you know, whether it's a top rail or a bottom rail guard as far as where we can go.
Yeah, Council President McCurbin, I'll have to check into it. Sometimes state law is but a minimum standard and there are other cases where state law cannot be exceeded. So we'd have to look at the specific statute.
Right. Uh, Councilmember Alberston.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I forgot my comment, so I will come back to you.
Um, I will jump in, I suppose, with another question, kind of along the same lines. Um, the other components I mentioned, um, particularly with youth being involved in this. What efforts throughout this summer, granted, um, not all of them were, were minors that are involved. Um, I know a recent one was. What are, what efforts are we doing with the school district um, on, on this as far as gun safety and, and addressing the violent issues um, through our schools?
You know, unfortunately, this year, due to our staffing, we, we've even pulled our school resource officers at this point until we get a, until we get our numbers back up. And that was our main um, conduit into um, you know, doing some of those educational steps with the school district. We're still good partners with them. You know, in the past, we've ran um, teen academies with the school district and having kids come in. And I fully intend that we'll continue that as soon as we get the staffing. Yeah, right now, we're just continuing to be partners with them and if it's an ask of them, we will absolutely assist. You know, right now, we don't have any plans, plans on the horizon.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, thank you. Do, I'm sure somewhere buried in all the data, we have geographical information about the, the preponderance of violent crimes. Do you happen to know off the top of your head which neighborhoods or communities within the city are experiencing the worst of this?
You know, that's something actually Jeff and I were talking about when we're preparing this. And it's, it's fairly random and spread throughout the city. It's not one area where we can just pull all our resources and, and put them there. It's, yeah, we're kind of making that crystal ball. If we, if we knew where it was gonna happen, we wish we could, you know, um, put what we need there, but it's.
It's actually relatively encouraging. That it's not super concentrated in one, any one area of the city. Uh, difficult, more difficult to manage, but.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, I should activate my microphone first. I'm not seeing anyone uh, wishing to speak further on this either. I know there's a lot to talk about, there's a lot to digest, to think about, a lot of um, discussion probably that we had, more obviously than we can have in one evening on this as far as starting to come up with potential solutions. So I expect this as an issue, we will, obviously, through the budget process, probably through the Public Safety Committee and through additional community input continued to discuss. I don't, you know, want to just sit around and just try to workshop everything tonight because I don't think that's probably the most productive. But um, I do want to make sure that we get ideas referred back in. So, and we do have a committee referral process. I know our uh, Public Safety Committee Chair wasn't able to be with us tonight, but certainly as far as uh, working through that process to make sure that when we have ideas, we can bring them through uh, and vet them through the normal council procedure. Um, and also obviously working with the administration as far as uh, what we visit. Because that's my biggest question is what can we do? Um, and I'd like to think, you know, we, we have some amount of authority and, and should be able to take uh, some steps here locally to do what we can. And then obviously, the next step outside of that budget process uh, is going to be through our legislative agenda to making sure that our assets of the legislature are responsive to some of the problems we've been seeing in the community. So uh, I, I will, oh, Councilmember Alberston.
My, my thoughts just.
Did I remind you of your question?
Well, they just kind of came together a little bit because, I mean, I, I'm gonna take the other side of Councilmember Halloran's comment because I don't find that encouraging at all when it's random and it's all over if it's increasing because it feels like it's a slippery slope that the city is on. I'd much rather you said, oh, hey, it's right here. Now, granted, the shootings, I think most of them have been, seems like downtown corridor, North Renton. I mean, when you look at those sort of things, um, you had that incident in, you know, on Sunset. It, it disturbs me that no one called 30 shots. And when I look at that, I don't know if that's because there's an uh, an atmosphere of apathy or fear or, hey, it happens all the time. You know, sometimes on Nextdoor, you know, hey, I heard shots fired, what's going on? It's after a Seahawks game or something like that, but that's not the case anymore. And so I, I'm kind of looking at it the other way that it's, it's almost like it's becoming an environment that where, for lack of a better phrase, well, hey, you know, it's, it's all over, it's okay. You know, for better or worse or whatever it is. So to Councilmember Van's question, I mean, as you think about it, and like you say, Mr. President, we're not gonna workshop it tonight, but as you think about it, I mean, it would really be helpful to figure out, you know, if you had a genie's lamp, you know, what, what policies? What, how can we quell this within the scope of, of what's possible? We know the Blake thing, but um, I, I guess more, it's just more of a comment that this feels more like a slippery slope and, you know, quite frankly, the trespassing, the warning, okay, do it again. At some point, it feels like, because residents are tired and they're fed up. And I know we all get emails and it feels like even on a temporary basis, we have to, we have to just, you know, say no more of this or figure out the best way to, in a compassionate yet tough love way or whatever it is, to say, this is not the place. And sometimes I feel like we're walking on eggshells when we have to do something about it because, you know, Renton's on a good upward, upward growth area and, you know, businesses won't want to come here and I can easily be short-circuited. So my request would just to be, as you talk about things, you know, just act like nothing of this is impossible. And, you know, let, let's not play not to lose, but let's actually play to win and figure out where we can do some things. Even if we just have one thing that the council can act upon. That would be, you know, appreciated. That's it. Done.
Thank you for your thoughts, Councilmember Alberston. That's the, just exactly the sort of discussion we were hoping to spur tonight, to have people to, you know, kind of express, um, you know, their take on, on what's going on and, and not necessarily come up with all the answers because that's gonna be a process. But uh, yeah, just react if anything else. So I appreciate, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Uh, Councilmember Rivera?
Actually, Councilmember Alberston just inspired me because um, closed caption television, CCTV is incredibly beneficial. Have we done a cost analysis, any sort of study of what that would be to, throughout the city, invest in CCTV? Because I remember when I was, um, when I was, when I was studying in England, it was really well set up in the sense that they had people, and it's similarly set up in New York City, where people would just be watching the cameras. And let's say you have a female walking alone at night, they would actually follow her on the cameras to make sure she got home safe. There, there were these kind of preventive measures into place. And so has there been any research into, into what that would cost us for the city to do something similar?
That's question B, not to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you.
Good questions. Well, I, I think, I don't know that we have more for tonight, but like I said before, I know this could be an ongoing discussion. And I, I think ideas like those, um, just keep thinking, brainstorming and bring those back, obviously, to this committee. I know we have um, at least one additional slot in the, towards the end of the year, we can reconvene, bring some of the stuff back to Cow. Um, obviously, as I said, public safety referrals are always, always welcome. Um, I don't think anyone expected, obviously, as I said before, we're gonna solve this overnight, but I, I want to make sure we don't lose momentum. Uh, let the community know this is something we are going to continue to work on and continue to take very seriously. So uh, with that for tonight, I will uh, adjourn the committee to the whole and we will reconvene as a full council at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.